Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. And we're the only thing keeping you folks from a long weekend, so we'll move along as quickly as we can. Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Here.
Counselor Genetino.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Counselor LaCastro.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we remain standing for a moment, a silent prayer of reflection, then we'd ask you to keep in mind the saving of all the families and everyone in the state of Texas across our country. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, public announcement today.
Sure, Mayor, we just have a few announcements. Our summer season is starting to get closer, and the first main event is Monday with the return of the Memorial Day Parade. The parade this year starts at eleven a.m. Lineup is on the top of East Hill at the corner of Fulton and Genesee Street. The parade will proceed down through downtown and end in the vicinity of Veterans Memorial Park at one-seventy-two Genesee Street. Immediately following the parade, at approximately just before twelve p.m., there will be a veteran's service or replay ceremony at Veterans Memorial Park immediately following the parade. We also have other event announcements that are coming out over the... A lot of things will start in the month of June, and then there's a lot of activity for summer concerts and events in July and August. All of that stuff has been updated to our city's website. I will announce one of the first events will be a Rock the Top concert, free concert, in downtown Auburn on Friday, June tenth, seven till ten p.m. with the band The Arcade. That'll kick off the summer concert season from our City of Auburn Department of Parks, as well as that event is coordinated with the Auburn Downtown Bit. And then just a week from tomorrow, our Double Days for the summer will have their home opener. Double Days open up on Friday night, June third, at seven p.m. against the Newark Pilots, and welcome the Double Days back for a second season in the Perfect Game Collegiate Baseball League. And they have a full schedule for the month of June and the month of July. And they do have a new feature this year where you can purchase tickets online at the Double Days website, auburndoubledays.com. So those are some of the early event announcements for our summer, and hope to see everybody out and about. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. We will move along to our ceremonial... to our swearing-in ceremony for firefighters. Chief Fritz, yourself and members of council, will be at the derailment. Start in on that.
Mayor Quill and chief and the council members will be out in front of the rail. And we'll start with Michael Bocleone. Michael will be joined by his wife Jamie and his sons. Or not just his wife.
My major... Major Fisher, so we don't want your back, so we know you're dying to do this, so... You're all set. That's a good place you're looking. If I will raise your right hand, if you repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Michael Bocleone.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Very good. This is the only time you're allowed to drop by.
Next up, we have Tyler Catalfano. He'll be joined by his fiancee Stephanie Creant and mother Nicole.
Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Tyler Catalfano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Next up will be Connor Cushing, and he'll be joined by his father, Dan.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Connor Cushing.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Very good. Congratulations.
Next, we have Cody Helverson. He'll be joined by his father, Robert, his mother, Libby, and his girlfriend, Mia.
If I will raise your right hand, if you repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Cody Helverson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Next up, we have Lance Myers. Lance will be joined by his girlfriend, Michaela, and his mother, Patricia.
If I will raise your right hand, if you repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Lance Myers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Next up, we have Jack Stevens, and he'll be joined by his mother and his father.
If I will raise your right hand, if you repeat after me.
Aye, Jeff Stevens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Our final new firefighter this evening is Zachary Williams. He'll be joined by his brother and his father.
If I will raise your left hand, if I will raise your right hand, if you repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Zachary Helverson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Well, congratulations to all our new firefighters and your families. Mr. Diger and I, at each group that comes through, we look you over pretty good because we're not going to be here forever, the two of us. So we're always looking for new recruits, so... Who do you have, about thirty years left?
I've got thirty-one, so we'll go look at that, so...
Council, with your approval, would like to take about a ten-minute break, recess. Well, we'll be in recess for approximately ten minutes. For our new firefighters and your families, congratulations. You won the lottery. We expect to see it repaid. Our police chief is there looking, saying, darn, it should have been a firefighter. We're in recess.
Yes, you too, Kent. Congratulations.
Call us back into order. Mr. Diger, new hires?
Thank you, Mayor. We really don't have any new hires, but we do have movement of one of our employees. He's been here for quite some time, typically working in the engineering department. And the last few years, she's done some of our grant work for us and assisted our director of capital projects on several grants and projects. And when we created a grants assistant or grants coordinator position, she was well-equipped to do that, so Oneia Cluster, who was previously in engineering, is now working with Christina Selvick and hard at work on FEMA hazard mitigation grants, which we mentioned, I believe it was last week, that are due next week. So we've got a few of those applications going on, and she's filling that role currently. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor? Mr. Gomson Castro, please.
Did we fill that job?
We are advertising for that position currently, yes.
Thank you.
So we haven't filled it, but we're working towards it.
Thank you.
Public to be heard.
At this point in time, we'll open the public to be heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less, and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Good evening. As always, thank you very much for your hard work. My name's Walt Aikman. I'm at Seventeen Liberty Street. Last week, I got to look at an ash tree. It was a white ash at a friend's house over in Senate. It was perfectly healthy. It was a spectacular tree. And so we're trying to line up some treatment for him to get that tree taken care of. Came back through on Genesee Street, past Hoops Park, and all the way into downtown, and just how beautiful it looked. And there's the hard work of your departments of engineering, Mr. Lupien, and Public Works, Mr. Talbot, going all the way back to the days of Mike Long and company. It really shows, all that hard work. And the beautiful flags on South Street, the mulching downtown is just gorgeous. And the other day, I had the pleasure of planting the last of our spring trees with some kids. Things heard during the planting. Hey, I want to try. Beep, 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 big tree coming through. And my favorite, guys, that hole has to be a lot bigger. But we know those aren't the kinds of sounds we heard at that Texas elementary school the other day. So I asked the council to pass a unanimous resolution asking the federal government to enact commonsense firearm control. Not Safe Act-type control, nothing drastic, no bans, no takebacks. Simply want to figure out a way to control the access of these firearms from unsupervised teenagers and the mentally ill. And how do you do that? Well, you do background checks, and you do it like with a permitting system like we do in New York State. If I want to have a registered handgun, I have to get a bunch of people to stand behind me, and I have to apply to the police department and the judges, and they have to decide whether I'm worthy. I know I get a lot of heat for that, maybe you will too, but look, I have hunting stories from all over the world that I've been in, okay? I can really entertain you with those, and you can't say that my family hasn't sacrificed. So it's patriotic when we protect our children, okay? Before, during, after they're born, for their whole lives. That's our job, to protect our children. It's absolutely vital that we do that. You cannot question my family's patriotism, okay? Until you've had Army officers on your front porch, and you're down there, like I was with my skivvies, going, guys, are you lost? Do you need help? Well, they're... no, they're there to talk to somebody, and you notice one of them is a chaplain. You don't want to experience that, but that's the price of our freedom. But having our children killed at school should not be the price of our freedom. We have a responsibility. I'm asking all of you unanimously for commonsense control of these firearms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Is there anyone else to ask to be heard this evening? Well, we closed the initial public to be heard. Move along to the approval of the meeting minutes. Minutes from May fifth this year, we have a response to it. Counselor Kent, Secretary Counselor Genetino. Discussions, corrections, please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye. The remainder of the minutes will be on next week's agenda, Counsel. Move along to Mr. Diger, your city manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to give council a few updates on things. I've got a very brief update on bids that we're currently accepting for the water filtration plant improvement project. Responses are due back on June twenty-first. And as always, more details on the project are available on the city webpage under the tab, Bids and RFPs. Aside from that, tonight, I'd like to ask a few of our senior staff members come up and just give us a brief update on a couple of projects. So we have our Superintendent of Engineering Services, Bill Lupien, here. And I asked Bill earlier if he'd be willing to come up and give us a brief update on the parking garage project, as well as the annual road program. Bill, if you wouldn't mind doing that?
Yes, as far as the parking garage, that's proceeding. We finished up our nighttime activities. They're scheduled, the blacktop asphalt parking down on the lower level. That's still going to be probably around three, four o'clock tomorrow. That'll be open for the rest of the weekend until Tuesday morning around six a.m. We hope to have that parking permanently open as of... We hope to have that parking permanently open as of June tenth. The asphalt parking will have just a little bit of work left. Or maybe it might go one week later, finishing up some of the repairs, just on the ramp going up and the one going down. We anticipate that ninety percent of probably all the parking will be available as of June tenth. There will be two subsequent operations, the last week of July, first week of August. With help from our city clerk there, Chuck, and he's talking to our downtown bid and all the rest. We really don't have any events then, so that's when we'll close the parking job, parking garage down, other than the asphalt area, to do the three coats of the membrane. Takes about a day in between each one. We'll follow it up with all the traffic lines and painting for the parking spaces. That'll be done in those last week of July, going into the first week of August. The only other thing that's outstanding is the glass that is going to replace in the stairway towers. That's on-ordered, and unfortunately, you know, delivery times are way out there. It's going to be another sixteen weeks. They're anticipating the glass will show up. When it does, it'll get immediately, within a couple of days, we'll have it all installed. But basically, the parking garage will be done in the month of June, and be open from that point on. As far as the road program, we already did our first phase of the crack sealing. That's all been done. We just finished up the micro-surfacing, first phase, last week. We'll do one more micro-surfacing, and then later in the fall, we'll do another crack sealing, where the cracks open up a little bit better. As far as, there is two streets that we held over from last year's road program. That was Tabor Drive, because we used that for a detour when we were doing the South Street. And then the gas electric was over on Lafayette Place. We've milled both those streets this week. We put the binder layer on Tabor Drive. So now we're adjusting the structures on both Tabor Drive and Lafayette Place. And we're hoping to pave the final coat, maybe as early as next week, as soon as they get all the structures done. Okay, that's as far as the road program. The current road program, we just issued to Whit Vitale. They just got the notice to proceed today. They had their insurances and bonds. That's all done. The contracts have been signed. And so that went out today. So then they'll be proceeding that shortly. There is one other thing, is that in coordination with the Public Works, State Street Public Plaza, we're going to be milling State Street on Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day. We're going to come down there and mill that block from Genesee down to where Dill Street is. So we will mill that street out, and that's in coordination with that other project. And then they'll go in, and they've got to lay some concrete and do some pavers and all the rest before we come back and finish that up with the top cores. But right now, that'll be milled this Tuesday. Okay, weather, always weather-dependent, but usually, weather doesn't stop the milling, usually. That's a operation that can be done if it's raining. Okay, I think that's about it. Any questions? Yes, Counselor?
Just to save you from sitting down and then getting back up, how about South Street status? I see them down there working. Is that a punch list from last year?
The South Street reconstruction area? What do you call it? We did have three trees that died. They're under warranty. They will be replaced. I know they put all the banners up. Geez, I drove down there. I didn't see any construction vehicles.
Right on the corner, I think, yesterday, there was four pickups.
Oh.
On the corner of South and...
That could have been one of the utility companies. I don't think...
So basically, South Street?
Oh, we do have South Street, that's right. They have to paint the poles. So that, they could have been the painting company. That's one of the uncompleted work items that was left over. They will also probably come back, and until they get, at least, I think it's eighty or eighty-five percent of the grass seed is, you know, fully, the density of that level, they'll have to keep coming back and reseeding until they acue, to accomplish that. So that's right, too. At the intersection, we do have to do that traffic painting. I forgot about that. I mean, that's what that was probably.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Yes, Counselor?
Thank you. The stairwell, I think, in the northeast corner of the parking garage, I think it was done last year. It's all discolored.
Yes, that's, they had, some of the rebar was cut from a previous project. And even though they did some work in there, we find out that we've got bleeding in all of the stair towers. So the contractor, that's, he's looking into a product that can clean that up, and we'll have to seal the ends of any of that metal. It must have been real close to the surface. But that was from a previous project, and I didn't say we're, didn't expect that. But now that it is bleeding, we will take care of that as part of this project.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and next, Jenny Haynes, our Director of Planning, is going to give us an update on the State Street Plaza project, which is going to get very busy here starting next week.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council for having us here tonight. I have to show you some pictures. That's just how we got to do it. This is a picture of the plaza from two days ago. It's really fun watching big equipment do cool stuff. So that was placing some of our granite that day. And then here is a picture today. Can really see how it's taking shape, colored concrete, our columns. We're really excited about that. You can see on the right-hand side of the picture here, there's some scaffolding here. We are continuing to work in partnership with the owner of that building. They are working on the facade of that building, and so we're trying to work around each other. Same owner owns property over here, that the city sold, next to AT Wally's. And they are working with AT Wally's to come up with complementary designs for that space. So we're excited about that. They understand our timeline. We're asking them to be done in the same timeline, so that's the plan. So as we continue to work toward completion of the plaza, we are going to be turning our attention also to the street. And we had showed the council and the businesses in the area this design. So this is our plan for that block of State Street from Genesee down to Dill Street. If you remember, the council approved a change order to Crane Hogan's contract a couple of weeks ago in order to get this work started. The work is funded with an existing bond that was approved last year. So I wanted to echo what Billy said about weather. We want to give you a general timeline of things that are going to be happening in the next month or so. There's a lot that needs to happen. We want to get in there and get out of there as quickly as we can, so that the businesses can enjoy the space, customers can enjoy the space. But we have a lot that needs to happen. So we've got weather, there's existing conditions that we're not sure of that might be under there. And Seth and I were talking a little bit earlier. He was telling me that you used to be able to call a concrete company and get a load that day. And that's not necessarily the case anymore. So we're doing our best to get those things scheduled properly. So Billy mentioned the cooperation with the road program. We appreciate that. They're assisting us with this project. And Tuesday, after the Memorial Day fun, we're getting right started. So they're going to be milling the street in the asphalt areas that you see. At that point, the street will be closed until approximately June twenty fourth. We have a lot of things that need to happen in that area. We are going to, the next day, on Wednesday, June first, Crane Hogan, our general contractor, will be removing the existing brick pavers that are in the circular design, some of which are in the street, some of which are in the sidewalk area in front of a couple of businesses. And then they will be immediately working to do the forms for the first concrete pour. We also have some work in coordination with our water department that will be starting the week of June sixth. There's a water valve that needs to be replaced at the intersection of State and Dill Street. So Tom Gayback and his crews will be doing that. He will work on water shut-offs with the businesses. The intention is to do the work at night, so that the businesses are not impacted with that work. So we appreciate the help from our water department with this project as well. That same week, we are planning on pouring exposed aggregate, which will be done on the east side of the street in the sidewalk area. That is part of the project that is going to be happening first. The end of that week, the plan is to pour the broomed concrete sidewalk in that area as well. So these areas here are where we're going to be working first. Nope, I'm sorry, other side of the street. Both sides, okay. So that's going to be what happens first. Following that, which will be in mid-June, the mid-part of the week, June fifteenth and sixteenth, we'll be working to pour the roadway. Because that concrete will be driven on, it needs a seven-day cure time. So that's why we are out to approximately June twenty fourth, till we can open the road back up. We're going to make sure that pedestrian ways are accessible as possible all the way through the project. And also, in late June and early July, even though we'll be done with the roadway and have it open, we will still have some work that we need to do with the landscaping and some other concrete work here and there for some repairs. So we'll still be in there for a little bit, and may have some periodic road closures through that timeframe. So that's a general timeframe. Again, just want to emphasize, you know, we have, we have a really beautiful design. It's a challenging design for the contractor. It's not fancy like Applebee's. It's actually fancy. So we have a, it's a little bit of a challenge to different pours in there, so we'll do our best. This is a general timeframe, and I'll be communicating with businesses tonight. I'll be sending an email with this information. I'll be reaching out to some specific businesses that will be most impacted with this to make sure that they're aware and that we get their needs met as best we can. Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Haynes, there's some trees over the years that have been taken out on State Street. Will those be replaced?
So we had taken out trees in front of the plaza itself. Those trees will be replaced. We are, there are some tree pits in front of AT Wally's. We have decided to leave those without trees, just because they're close to the, kind of, the intersection, and it's easier for the business with sidewalk cafes, and there's a lot of people in that area. So we are going to be replacing those tree pits with brick pavers that will match there. Down at the end of the street, near Dill Street, there are some trees in front of Prison City that are struggling. So we are working to remove those and replace them with grasses. So there will be some landscaping there.
So the trees across the street from Prison City, are those the ones you're talking about?
Right in front of Prison City are the ones that will be taken out. The ones across from Prison City will remain. So we're working to get as much green, greenery in there as we can. But those trees in front of Prison City, they're really struggling with, that's the side we plow on, the salt. So we're trying to get something there that will remain a little bit better.
Okay. I don't know that I like it, but I guess I don't have to like it. I just, I noticed downtown, our trees are struggling. And I wonder, you know, is it because we surrounded them with the permeable paving? And, you know, should that be taken out? I don't know. I don't know what's going on, but a good portion of our trees downtown are struggling. And, you know, that's an area, when it's hot in the summer, you know, there's a lot of concrete, a lot of blacktop.
Right.
It'd be nice to have as many trees down there as possible.
Yeah, it's definitely a difficult problem for us to have. We can, we can definitely talk about it. You know, we'll talk to our project team, talk to Mike Talbot. We have talked about that as we've been working through the design. That seemed to be the best solution, to have some things there that would survive better than the trees, especially in that area. It is, when you have hardscape around living things, it really is a difficult proposition. But we're doing our best to make sure that things are planted that will survive well, that we water well, so that, you know, we have some beautiful-looking things that will last for a long time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Jenny?
Has anybody communicated with utility companies to make sure they're not going to be coming through there in a few years?
We have already worked on, I believe, all the utilities that we need to in that area. The water department was in there, in the middle of the block, repairing a leak a couple of weeks, a few weeks ago.
How about next?
We did, says Seth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Next, I wanted to ask Chief Slaton to come up, and there's a host of different things that we've got to cover. Some related to current events happening around the country, some things related to fireworks, which oddly enough, been somewhat quiet this year compared to the last two years. But we know that fireworks season's coming up, and dirt bike season's out there, and all sorts of things. Do you mind giving us an update on a handful of topics, Chief?
Sure, City Manager. Thank you. I'll start with the fireworks. I don't like to jinx us, so I won't say it. It has been down, but we anticipate that to start up here rather quickly. So doing some brainstorming, I would like to try to get ahead of this. Advertise like we do, and ticket it, or click it, and such events like that. Get out in the papers, say that we're going to be out and about. We're going to put a detail on a couple of days, and see how that goes. And just have them focus on fireworks. The issue with the fireworks are, we normally, they're not a priority call if something else is going on. So when we respond, they're over. It is a violation, so we have to see it in our presence to do something. So it has to be done where we can see it. So with this two-person car, they would be able to do that. They would issue an appearance ticket to the individuals, and they would have to show up and answer to that. It kind of goes along the lines with the marijuana law out there. Just because fireworks became illegal in New York State, there are some rules that go with it. So with marijuana, everybody thinks they can sell it and use it and buy it now. That's not the case. Same thing that happened with the fireworks. There, you can't, they got to be groundwork. They can't be aerial, but yet they're sold. So that's a challenge for us. So that's one of the things I'm working on with the fireworks. The mini bikes and motorized bikes out there, we have had extra patrol out there for the month of May. We have confiscated a couple of mini bikes and motorcycles that can't be registered and are on the road. We continue to do traffic. Today, we had a couple, I received a couple of phone calls about mini bikes out there. We went up in the area. I personally saw one this afternoon that had an officer come up. So we're doing the best we can to catch them. We try not to, once I said before, try not to chase those, because they're usually not wearing helmets. They're not registered, and it's not worth the risk of somebody getting injured or killed. We try to do the best we can is get a plate, find out where they're parked, and then go talk to them. So, any questions on either one of those so far?
When you confiscate one, what happens?
So we take it in. It can't be registered. We will end up giving that back. They'll be issued tickets for riding it on the street, an unregistered vehicle on the street. So they have to answer to a traffic ticket.
Okay, can you at least look the air out of the tires or something before you give it back to them?
What constitutes a mini bike versus like a bicycle with a motor, like?
So bicycles with a motor can't be registered and can't be driven on the street. Electric bikes can. So a mini bike cannot be ridden on the street or driven on the street, because they're not allowed to be registered. One of the other topics I want to talk about was the extreme risk protection orders, the red flags. I mean, that's a big topic now. It's a hot topic throughout the country. And the goal is that, is to remove those firearms from individuals that are, are, have been arrested for firearms charges, have mental health issues. And these laws are put in place, so it's not just the police that can make a complaint about this. This can be done by a school administrator. This can be done by the DA's office. Family members can turn somebody in and say, "Hey, look, I'm a little concerned about a family member that I realize possesses a firearm, and they've got some history." And what we have to do is, it's a mild load of paperwork. We're working through that, because we found over the years that it wasn't consistent. And we've worked with Corporate Counsel Nate Garland on this, and he's assisted us in going into the... into the courts because a judge deemed that we need somebody with us, we need an attorney with us when we go in front of a judge regarding these orders. So I can say to this date, we have done three already. One in 2018, two in 2021, and we have one currently pending right now. So everything that's being talked about on TV, we've been doing here in the city of Auburn. I just want to make that a point, that we've been trying to get ahead of this for a few years now when we realize that somebody is having issues. With that, these orders are only good for a year and then we have to reapply to the judge to get it extended. The person has the right to due process, they have a right to present their side on this. That's why we need legal representation there ourselves. After a year, they're entitled to get those back, but they have to apply to get those back. We don't just give them back. And the ones from 2018, we still have, so.
Chief, they can apply and, and, and that's decided by a judge? And, and whomever can still turn it down?
They would have to go in front of a judge. They would have a hearing in front of the judge and, and we could be present when they had that hearing in the instances that we had. And they have a right to due process, to, to explain their side, why they think they should have that.
But it's the judge's decision whether they, they, they receive them back or not?
Correct. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that, that's correct, Chief.
Thank you. And that's all I have. If you have anything for me.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Status of the smoke shop at Five Points?
Wait down to court date. We have those charges for the untaxed cigarettes and we're just wait down the courts. Thank you.
That's it.
Reports from members of council, councilors? Councilor Cuddy, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This past Saturday, Auburn, along with Champions for Life, Finger League's Tennis and Auburn Community Tennis hosted the first tennis festival. It was very well attended, ages from young children to people my age. I participated in it and again, there was about 60 people throughout the morning participating. It was a very positive event and I know that there were some, the representative from USTA was there from Buffalo, the Eastern Region Coordinator, and he was very pleased with the turnout. There was, performed for purpose, played along with, at the other side of the playground part of Clifford Park. So it was a really wonderful event. So I just wanted to update the council on how successful it was. I know that Councilor Giannatino stopped by to check on my backhand, make sure it was informed.
Andre Agassi showed up.
But yeah, it was very, very good event.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else?
So I just wanted to mention that I went to the firefighters' training ceremony graduation on Friday morning and Councilor Giannatino was there as well. And it was just really a wonderful experience and it was a very proud moment for Auburn, I believe, because several people there talked about how welcoming the city was and how much they enjoyed spending time here because we had a lot of folks from Cortland, Manlius and Oswego also graduating at the academy. It was very well attended and it was just a wonderful event. And I also, Saturday I went to, it was in Owasco planting for willows. They're trying to create a shrub willow nursery in Owasco, the old water tower site in Owasco. So we were up there planting willow canes and hopefully they can be used in the future for a buffer to keep nutrients out of our waterways. Thank you.
Scheinsteader, we have Scheinsteader update on our agenda that was canceled to a date in the very near future. Anticipated zoning code revisions and clarifications by Mr. Garland?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will, I will stay here. Mr. Selbick is going to do most of the heavy lifting, but if there is any questions regarding interaction with the cannabis law, I'd be happy to field those.
Thank you. Mr. Selbick, welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of council for having us here tonight to kind of bridge the gap between our last presentation regarding the cannabis law and the requirements of that, as well as some of the additional updates that are ultimately anticipated and/or needed for our zoning code. As many of you will remember, the current zoning code was adopted in 2018. It's been four years since then, we haven't had a substantial change to the text in that time. I had anticipated changes much sooner, honestly, but with COVID flowing the way that it did, development pressure fell, some various things changed and now we're seeing that spike back up and it's, it's time to get some of these potential revisions in front of the board. The intent of the revisions isn't to make numerous broad sweeping changes, really that's focused on improving the usability of the code. The proposed changes are really around improving clarity and ease of use, consolidating certain sections of the code for greater flexibility, adding sections that weren't necessarily deemed necessary at the time or are brand new, such as the cannabis uses, and updating some changes or updating changes to reflect what's happening in our current system. I'll touch some on the stormwater management side of things. In general, we're looking to update sections on definitions, respond to the New York State Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act, codify certain sections of the code, including our current stormwater management practices. And then there are, of course, several typographical, or typographical errors that were in the code that we found using it that need to be corrected as we move forward. Many of the definitions that need to be updated are around this idea of better addressing our stormwater runoff. It includes terms like bio-retention, bio-swell, green infrastructure mitigation, rain gardens and wetland buffers. The other items that you're going to see as we proceed through the update are definitions related to cannabis uses that weren't previously contemplated. Article four is really specific to zoning districts. Again, we're not proposing to add or remove current zoning districts. What we have works very well, but instead we're looking to categorize and consolidate uses, consolidate the dimensional requirements that are within the zoning districts, touching again on cannabis uses, clarifying some of the categorical uses that are within our I-1 zoning district. And then I have a note down here about removing downtown district use by floor level guidelines. Touch base on that real quick before I jump ahead. We have a table in there that says in downtown, first floor is supposed to be this, second floor this, other floors this. Quite frankly, while it's great in theory that we have active uses on the first floor, we're not going to start displacing lawyers' offices and other offices to, to make that happen. So quite honestly, we've never really applied it and it probably shouldn't be in the code as a result of that. The use table itself, in our current zoning code, the uses that are permitted in each district are listed in three separate ways. Really, this is redundant. It leads to potential confusion. It increases the likeliness of mistakes when revisions are made. The table itself that you see on here, this is just an example, is a great tool, but it shouldn't necessarily be within the code itself. The, the uses that are permitted are clearly outlined within each zoning district, as noted on the example to the side there. What we'd like to do is continue to use that format that clearly articulates what the uses are and then pull out the use tables as, as a tool, but not necessarily having them sandwiched within the code itself. The other use, place that uses are listed are within our Balkan use tables. And while it may be difficult to read, you can kind of see an example here that went through each and every permitted use for each and every district and assigned a minimum lot size to it, a minimum lot width to it, setbacks, impervious coverage requirements, building maximums, and then parking. Honestly, this has been very difficult to work with in the end. The previous code utilized a slightly different approach to it where the size requirements, the dimensional standards were based upon the zoning district in which it was located. So what we would like to do is go back to that more simple look at it where if you know what zoning district in, you know what the size requirements are. And then, yes, there can be exceptions to that rule, but when everything becomes an exception, you no longer have, have a general rule. Quite honestly, if we look back at the previous one, I would have a very hard time justifying why a health club has a 30-foot setback, but a four-unit house has a 15-foot setback in a district. So these are the types of things that we're looking at, just clarifying, again, not making broad sweeping changes, but really trying to improve the, the usability of the code. Cannabis uses that we had discussed previously, this is a brand-new thing that our code didn't contemplate before. Nate and I, more Nate than I, had spoke about the various licensing that's going to be available through New York State. And in this graphic that's done up here, you can see nursery, cultivator, processor, distributor, onsite consumption, retail dispensary, cooperative, micro-business, delivery, they're all different types of licenses. In the end, there's the ones that are shown in green, which have a land use implication and a couple of the other ones, such as cooperative and micro-business, have more to do with an ownership structure and, and who can do those things. So as a cooperative, they can be a cultivator or processor and they may sell or distribute. A micro-business can be a cultivator, processor, distributor, and it can also retail its own cannabis. Delivery, that's a unique one. It's not specified in a certain location as much as it'll be licensed to allow those with that permission to deliver the product. Quite frankly, I'm equating it to a pizza delivery guy. Maybe not quite the same, but I have a feeling it'll go that way. With that said, when we're looking at this, the, the uses that are land use-based that will appear within the zoning code are nursery, cultivator, processor, distributor, as well as onsite consumption and the retail dispensary. The businesses that are not retail dispensary or onsite consumption, they ultimately will fall into categories for general nursery, agriculture, manufacturing and warehousing. These are what the state is referring to as preempted licenses or uses. Local governments have minimal control over those particular uses. They will fall within whatever category that are appropriate for the local zoning or, yeah, the local zoning. In our case, something like a nursery in this, we touched on at the last time, would fall under our commercial greenhouse, allowable in our commercial, highway, commercial, central corridor and industrial district. The cultivator allowed under urban agricultural and heavy commercial in our central commercial district and our I-1 industrial park district. Processor, same idea, light industrial or agricultural processing within the district shown there. And the distributor would fall in their distribution center or heavy commercial. The seed, which is our general commercial, our central commercial and industrial or industrial park. On the flip side, we have what I refer to as your local control uses. This is your adult-use dispensaries and your onsite consumption. These are the particular uses that as a local body, we have more control over, yet we don't have unlimited control over how those things happen. The code, or the, the, the tax law, tax act, taxation act was very specific in how we could exercise some control over those. So as we're looking to move forward, these are the areas that we as a city have to highlight within our code and specify the, the zones that we determine them to be appropriate. And for tonight's purposes, I, I noted highway commercial and general commercial as well as highway commercial. That's up for discussion as to how broad we want to make the various zoning districts to include those or how narrow. The issue becomes that you can't make them so narrow that you effectively zone out the ability to have those uses. Those uses are permitted under New York State rules and regulations. I'm going to jump back to a couple cannabis things in just a second, but I want to talk more broadly about supplemental regulations. And this is the section of the code that we dive into a little bit further for details on particular uses and items that apply more broadly to all of our zones or uses. Landscaping and buffering, this is something that in the previous example of our code, these were tied together. The new code, and I can't justify why we did it, but we did, we separated them out. They don't work well separated, they go hand in hand. If you want to mitigate the impacts from a gas station to the property next door, that's buffering. How do you get some level of buffering? You typically require landscaping. So we have this situation where we're pointing the two different sections of the code and they really need to be brought together and make sure that they work well together. Off-street parking and residential driveways, this is the same thing. These were together under one section, we pulled them apart. So now we end up with a situation where we have residential driveways that isn't particularly well-defined. We end up pointing back to off-street parking and the regulations for off-street parking associated with a commercial business become overly burdensome for someone who has a two-car driveway. So we want to clarify the relationship of how those things work together. Outdoor seating, for whatever reason, at the time we went through the code initially in 2018, we thought it was very important to provide maximum regulations on people's ability to have outdoor seating. COVID proved us wrong. We actually want to encourage opportunities for outdoor seating. So we want to make it a simpler process. The process as written in code requires development of plans and submission to the Design Review Committee. It, it's red tape for the sake of red tape and I, I think we want to simplify what the requirements are and if you have Starbucks that wants to put seating out front, let them put seating out front. We do note that if it's a sidewalk cafe, this is a separate issue, that that's in a city right of way and we have control over how that happens. But for an eatery that wants to open up a patio, let's not dive too deep into that. Stormwater runoff is something that we, we manage right now through our current practices. And what we do is require that when someone's developing, their post-development runoff does not exceed their pre-development condition. The issue that we do have to some extent is this is not codified. This is a application of a larger state requirement. And we can talk about the, the benefits of mitigating runoff. A lot of it comes quite simply down to protecting water quality, which I know is important. It also comes down to volumes of water and how quick that water's coming off and flooding and issues and concerns that we have both upstream and downstream. I'm sure that our Director of Municipal Utilities could go into a lot of detail about the impacts that stormwater runoff has on our utilities and our ability to manage those items. What we want to do is encourage the use of green infrastructure, bio-swells, trees, rain gardens. Right now, there's a stormwater pollution prevention plan. This is a state-required look at stormwater management. It applies to sites- It applies to sites that are more than an acre. There's a lot of times in the city that we're dealing with sites less than an acre. And what we'd like to do is look towards this idea of a urban runoff reduction plan. This is something that's been implemented in Binghamton, and really, the intent of it is to require that land development and certain parameters, in our case, less than an acre, but we'll better find those parameters moving forward, that they retain a 10-year, 24-hour storm event on their site, managing how quickly that water enters the rest of the watershed and how quickly it enters our infrastructure and ultimately downstream from where we're at. Switching gears back for just one second to the cannabis uses, and I put this over here because this is the idea of having zoning designated within districts, but then having supplemental regulations that would be above and beyond, or I guess clarify what can happen within those uses. The preempted uses, as I mentioned, we may want to consider things like lighting and security, noise due to manufacturing, odor due to processing, and then the structures that are related to indoor cultivation. The issue in doing so that we have, though, is any of these changes under these preempted uses, because they are under a more broadly, they're under a more broad category of use. So for instance, manufacturing. Processing of cannabis is considered manufacturing by New York State, and it falls under our manufacturing requirements per zoning. If we were to say we want a cannabis processor to have a 10-foot perimeter fence and this and that and everything else, what that ultimately would mean is all manufacturing would fall under that same umbrella. And so I think we want to look at these and make sure that, from a general standpoint of urban agricultural, manufacturing, distribution, that we're hitting the right spots for all of those uses and not suddenly thinking that we have to go over the top to grab one particular use. Again, on the other side of that is the local controls. And again, these uses are specific to the adult-use retail and onsite consumption. And we may want to look at supplemental regulations that limit the hours of operation, that require physical separation between establishments so that you don't end up with such a concentration in one area. Again, lighting or security. The other one that I have noted on there is this idea of increased distances from schools and houses of worship. The state law appears, as of right now, that it's going to require a 500-foot separation from schools and 200-foot from houses of worship. The city has the ability to up those, but again, can't up those to a degree that zones out the ability to have those uses. I'm not necessarily recommending that we up those, but the other item is nursery schools and daycares. They are not included as, they're not included under the school umbrella. That's a separate use, and so if we have concern with that, we'll have to add that additional supplemental regulation within our zoning code.
What is the distance for bars from schools and houses of worship?
Um, I think, and I'm, I think it's a 500, no, it's actually 200-foot if I'm not mistaken.
Only 200.
250. Do you know by chance?
It's not uniform.
Okay.
Extremely helpful. It's 500 for one and 200 for the other, but I can't, I can't get it straight. So it's 500 for schools and 200 for.
So in the case of bars and alcohol sales, we don't have a supplemental regulation that expands what the State Liquor Authority has. We go by their requirement. So when they're applying for that, if they meet the state requirement, we don't up that at all.
Going along with what Counselor Giannettino's line of questioning, and I may be out of line, is there a, is there a limit to where like a smoke shop or head shop could be close to like a church, or is that not even part of zoning?
That could be part of zoning. We don't have that current limitation, and I don't know that that occurs even at the state level. But that is actually one of the other items that, in some of the documentation that I was reading, is this idea of not only being concerned about the actual cannabis retail sales and onsite consumption, but also how does that interplay with those businesses that may spring up, like a smoke shop that provide paraphernalia and related items but aren't clearly under that? And is there a need to regulate those more heavily so that, again, you don't end up with a deep concentration of all these types of uses in one lot in one part of the city and that ultimately it's more equitable?
I think we already know the answer to that question.
Yeah.
All's it has to do is drive through town right now. I think we already know the answer to that question.
Yeah.
If we could include something, a staff recommendation, I would be interested in seeing what you recommend.
Okay.
Well, we've, Counselor, we've discussed at the staff level several schemes that are in place in other municipalities that deal specifically with the smoke shop issue, whether through a business licensing scheme or a special new chapter of the municipal code. There are ways to attack that particular problem that other municipalities have used for quite some time. And I think it's important to, you know, this is all new concepts and nomenclature, but it's important to make a distinction between a retail adult-use cannabis business and the smoke shop or head shop, in that not only are they, they're catering to a different clientele, I think it's safe to say, but one is licensed and regulated and taxed, and one is illegal, operating illegally, frankly.
But I do think that that's something that, in terms of this overall update and looking at what other methods there might be, we can look at to address that and have more control over how that does happen.
Thank you.
Finally, I want to touch base on the site plan review process itself. The way that we had initially set up that process was there's a minor site plan and a major site plan. The minor site plan was something that was reviewed in-house by the Design Review Committee, which is made up of all the various departments, police, fire, municipal utilities, planning, codes, our Corporation Council, and whomever else I might be missing. That would be reviewed internally and approved. The, and the intent behind that is it made the process more quickly, more, made the process quicker, not more quicker, quicker. The other approach to it was the major site plan review, which is something, the traditional site plan review, submit plans, we bring them to the planning board. We have public to be heard and public hearings depending upon what it is, and we go through that. What we've run into is twofold. Number one, the way that the code is set up is the, it was not the intent, but the DRC having a formal approval has become essentially a public body, and that was not the intent. They are an advisory committee so that in issuing the permit, our code enforcement officer knows if there's issues that need to be addressed and things of that nature. It was to get everybody on the same page that we knew in a particular circumstance, small development, something small happening, but hey, is there, is there an issue with sewer there? Is there an issue with water there? Is there an issue with fire access? So we want to clarify the code in that the Design Review Committee acts in an advisory capacity only. The other items that we're looking to address are, the minor site plan has a limitation on the top end for requiring minor site plan if it's 25% or less. There was no bottom end of that. And so there's been circumstances where we have, and I'll say, I think, needlessly slowed down businesses from building a garage or doing a small 800-square-foot addition because of the way that the code is written and having to bring it through the DRC to spend that time back and forth. And honestly, I don't know that there's a huge benefit when someone is trying to do something very small. So my recommendation is that we put a bottom limit on that, that we aren't looking at every time a business wants to add a garage to their property because they have a storage issue or something of that nature. We are trying to look at the impacts or the projects that are more likely to have an impact, giving our local businesses the opportunity to move forward, do what they need to, and inserting ourselves in that review when there's, when there's a benefit to doing so. So that's, in a nutshell, the anticipated revisions that we're looking at. Just to touch base on the path forward, I anticipate doing a red line of the existing code that clearly highlights in detail, using all the wonderful legal language that we need to use to cover those changes that I've just discussed, providing that to council as part of a first reading for the ordinance, and then ultimately holding a public hearing that's required with the planning board. I anticipate that process because of timing between this board and the planning board, still taking a couple months, in which I would love both questions, comments, and feedback on the way that we're trying to clarify things within the code before coming back to council for adoption of those provisions.
It looks to me like a lot of red tape, a lot of loopholes, and a lot of work for somebody.
I don't disagree with you.
Any way to simplify it?
That's.
Even more?
I will look at that as much as I can.
Thank you.
Counselor, if you ask, are we volunteering?
Yeah, I'll sit with you.
It's on tape, too. Go ahead, please.
Couple weeks ago, we had the issue with the shed on South Street. And previous to that, we had an issue come before us from Historic Resources Review Board, I think it's 70 South Street.
Yeah.
How do we fix that? Can we fix it through this? And one of the things that came up in the most recent instance was that the applicant presented a picture and basically said that we're going to go to the zoning board for change, right? I think we need to shore up the process where, when that happens, it automatically has to go back to Historic Resources Review Board. And I think we also need to codify that no project moves forward to every associated board, whether it's planning, zoning, Historic Resources Review, is all in agreement.
Yeah.
The other thing I would like to talk about, if there are issues with zoning and planning, decisions with zoning and planning, they don't come back to us. They go to court.
Yeah.
I don't understand why Historic Resources Review Board is coming back to us. I would like us to look into having a uniform process across the board with all three boards that if there are challenges, that it goes to a court of law. Because it becomes very political when it comes here, right? And it really shouldn't be. That's why those boards exist.
Yeah.
We should have no part in the zoning process, no part in the planning process, no part in the Historic Resources Review Board. That's my opinion. And if we can do it for two, I'm curious why we don't do it for the third.
We can do it for the third. The item that has been part of the, I think it's Chapter 178 within the Historic Preservation, when that was initially drafted in the mid-'90s, for whatever reason at that time, there was a desire for appeals to come before the board instead of via an Article 78 process. If we are to, and Nate, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but if we are to amend Chapter 178 to remove that particular provision that says appeals come to this board, ultimately the, any appeal to a decision made would be via an Article 78 before the courts. It would eliminate the review by this board in the same way that an appeal of a planning decision, planning board decision or zoning board decision would happen. And I think all we need to accomplish that is for the council to say, let's match the other boards and have a similar process.
That is in the red line part of the process, yes. But to speak to it legally, yes, it's the, an Article 78 is ripe when an applicant has exhausted their administrative remedies, and by essentially just X-ing out that one particular section of the Historic Preservation Chapter that sends appeals to this body, that would make the HRB the last stop in the administrative process and then make the matter ripe for an Article 78.
So that's, I mean, we'll add that to our list of items to address. Again, that will be article, or Chapter 178 is a separate chapter, it's a separate ordinance, so you will see that come forward in its own package, and this come forward in a different package. We do have in the code as it stands right now referrals back and forth between boards that are required. If something is to occur that's a planning board-reviewed item within the Historic District, there's a required referral to the Historic Resource Review Board. Unfortunately, there are times when the understanding of what one board said versus another board are misunderstood, and we will do our best to make sure that we clearly understand the intents of each board when they approve and/or deny or ask for referrals from the other boards.
And along the lines of, I think, what Counselor LaCassola was saying, I understand, appreciate, and agree with stormwater mitigation. I get all that. I just want us to strike the balance between reasonable and not overly burdensome, not only process-wise but cost-wise. I think there's a balance there, is what I'm getting at.
I fully agree with that assessment from both of my esteemed counselors. The, my concern has always been that, that balance between what we're asking someone to do and what's the, what's the cost-benefit of having them go through those steps. If there's not a clear benefit from having pushed someone through a process, why, why make them go through that process at that point? So my intent and my thought in looking at this is simplifying some of those processes, requiring those processes only when there's a benefit. But at the same time, to your point, we can't throw out our regulations and let people do whatever they want because we need to be mindful of the impact that any one person's development has on another property.
Sure. Thank you.
I have a question. In recent, recently, I know that Assistant Corporation Counsel Nate Garland and myself, and I believe maybe another counselor, has been given some concerns about people in Auburn taking onsite, taking like a garage and turning it into something that would be considered a kennel of sorts, or housing large amounts of animals. Do, is there anything in the red line that may address some of the concerns of taking a structure and turning it into some kind of multi-unit for animals?
We do permit, we do define and permit kennels, and when we, when we define kennels, it includes both cats, dogs, and other household pets. Kennels are only permitted within a certain district. I actually don't want to say which one because I can't remember. I think it might be the industrial or commercial district, something of that nature. So in the case that there's, there's a kennel being run somewhere other than that So in the case that there's, there's a kennel being run somewhere other than that, we have found the language in here that, that prohibits that from being allowed, codes then has to go through their process of following up. The issue in part becomes a kennel in the way that it's defined as a commercial enterprise, and whether or not something's being done for commercial gain, monetary gain, kind of defends, defines it as a commercial use. So I think we can dive deeper into the, the cases where maybe someone acting out of the goodness of their heart. And, and come back with an answer to that as part of this red line and, and a deeper dive.
Yeah, just because I think, you know, there are, you know, we're going over the code and, or zoning, and there's anomalies, right? And the code does a good job of trying to address that, and here's something where this is, is occurring, I just think it's important to like at least address it or, or find some means, whether it be codes or some other means to address an issue when these anomalies happen or like these violations can, can occur.
Okay, understood.
Steve, if I may, the Chair of the Z B A brought a matter to my attention last week that I think council will have some feedback on. Election Day when this ordinance was passed was the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November, and no votes could be cast before or after that, no votes can be cast after that now, but there are periods of early voting allowed in New York State, and our signage, political signage requirement in the zoning code is tied to Election Day. So the Z B A's chair was, request was to tidy up the political signage piece so that there's a, so it's tied to the, the current state of voting, specifically early voting, rather than the first Tuesday in November.
So are you asking that we allow political signs thirty days before early voting?
A, a period of time before, uh, early voting, yes, that our, our, you know, direction would be that perhaps that's too early, I, I don't have an opinion on that, but a period of time starting from when early voting starts.
And I imagine the proximity of, the proximity of signs needs to be away from vote, from places where people vote, polls.
Yeah, the, the political signage, actually, I don't even know if our zoning covers that piece of it.
Know that our political, I don't know that our zoning covers that, I think that that's restrictions on state or the election board and things of that nature as to where that stuff can be, or how close it can be placed to polling locations.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Next, update on East Genesee Street and John Street, Mr. Jensen, welcome back.
Hey there, Mayor and Council. Oops, let's get this thing started. A lot of projects going on tonight.
That's good.
Oh, come on. There we go. So yeah, my name's Seth Jensen, Director of Municipal Utilities, I'm joined here as well by Bill Lupi, and our Superintendent of Engineering Services. This project located on East Hill and John Street has been kind of a long time coming. Municipal Utilities has significant vested interest in some necessary utility upgrades that we've really been working on over the last five years, with some major sewer interceptors, sewer separation projects, as well as some necessary water main upgrades, which at the end of multiple utility projects, including gas mains and services and water services, you wind up with a road that doesn't drive as nice as it did the day that it was first put in place. And as a result, we'll also be paving this area. So just a quick look at our, our budget and, and what we're accomplishing here this, this year in 2022, and some, some work that we've done in 2021. The majority of the funding for this project is coming out of the touring dollars that council authorized or requested we spend money on to improve East Hill and John Street. But at the same time, before we paved this street, we wanted to do our best to prepare for the future and do some necessary sewer and water upgrades, which is additional dollars on the budget. So what's the plan? I'll, I'll hit through these slides and then turn it over to Billy here with some pretty pictures. Sewer fund is already underway, water fund is already underway with, with a lot of work. We've replaced three brick chimney manholes on East Genesee Street up the hill. You know, eighteen hundreds infrastructure, beautiful brick chimneys that, I don't know, you can look down them but you can't fit down them. When we have sewer repairs or work that we have to do, we install these large diameter plugs in the sewer mains, and then bypass that sewer flow around the area that we're working in. In this particular location, we've been unable to do bypass pumping and have had significant challenges in the past with necessary improvements to a vault down near Dunkin' Donuts, because we haven't been able to get our infrastructure into these locations necessary to keep those areas as minimize, minimal as possible when we're, when we're doing sewer bypass. We've also spent a lot of time, and as you guys know, we've been focused on C S O areas throughout the city of Auburn doing sewer separation work. Old part of the city, roof drains on all of these buildings, or a lot of these buildings, are directly tied into the sanitary sewer system. So we've spent considerable effort, the public's been great, you know, allowing us into their buildings to conduct inventory to find out what is still connected to the sanitary sewer, so that we can, at least as part of this project, work with the engineering department to get catch basins, storm catch basins strategically located and, and/or just storm laterals strategically located for future connection when, when we, when we move into the next phase of our C S O project. That way, we're not there two years later once our final design is ready to, to hit the street and digging up this beautiful road that the engineering department is working on providing the community here. We're also looking at a couple of challenging areas, both water and sewer, where we've got a lot of shared services. Again, old infrastructure, large mains into one building, then subdivided into three buildings, makes it very challenging when you have a single service going into multiple different owners, when there's an issue between the two owners potentially, or even one, one building wants to close down winterize, but they, they can't because they'll, they'll break the, the service line coming in potentially. So we're, we're looking at providing proper services to every single building along East Genesee Street and John Street, even looking into the future with some, some business owners. Part of the D R I project, Twenty Two East Genesee Street, they're, they're redeveloping that property, and we're, we're going to be providing a new six-inch service to Twenty Two East Genesee Street, actually, next week. So I sent out a notification to that, and Tom Gabeck has, has, really does an outstanding job with reaching out to the public. He's developed a text, text chain of all the affected property owners on East Hill, sending out text notifications in, well in advance to the work commencing, and then providing kind of those details as he's in the construction process. If he runs into an issue, boom, sorry, we're going to be one more day, or looking at wrapping things up, we're going to be blacktopping here tomorrow. So that's worked out very well for us, and we'll talk a little bit more about communication in the, in future slides. As far as the touring funds, looking to mill and pave, primarily mill and pave East Genesee Street from the bridge all the way up to Fulton Street. It's under design, they're looking at repairing, unfortunately, a good portion of the city's galvanized storm sewer systems are failing. This is, you know, not just East Genesee Street, it's, it's everywhere. Who'd have thunk it, salt corrodes, you know, steel pipes, and our arterial is, has these types of issues as well. So we're looking at slip lining where, where possible, because then we don't have to excavate the street. It's a much more cost-effective solution, and, and it won't require additional closures on the street itself. Billy and his team are working on that design right now and will be going out to bid in June of 2022. This funding is from tour, touring dollars, it needs to be spent by the end of this year, so the completion of this project needs to happen by November of 2022. There's been a lot of questions about, are we doing outside of the curb line or, or not? And really, when this was initially scoped by the engineering department, they contemplated curb to curb, and that's why we're doing everything storm-related, curb to curb, run a stub out, so that when we need to get back to tie into that, we're not back into the blacktop. So potentially future projects along the, the streetscape or the walkable paths up, up East Genesee Street, but will be very limited curbing repairs where necessary to make proper ADA pitches and things of that nature, and some driveway improvements, and then if there's, you know, a gross issue with the sidewalk in certain areas, they'll be making repairs there, but it's not a complete revamp of the sidewalk areas, it's specifically targeting the, the street section itself. So for John Street, we found a significant contributor of I N I, the Whiting parking lot, and, and they're joined with, with another business back there, very large square footage, blacktop space. That entire parking lot currently ties into our sanitary sewer system. When we were down working on that large vault that runs, let's kind of call it the decision-making manhole, it tells normal sewer flow to just go through it, but then when the rain comes and it hits, it activates our C S O by Wegmans. And we were working in replacing the, the top section of that for better access for maintenance, and we had a plug, sewer plug in the main, and we got one of those quick torrential downpours for about twenty minutes maybe. We pulled, we pulled the plug because the flow-through capacity wasn't enough, and as we were deflating the plug, it just boiled up out of there. I mean, it, it took like minutes for that thing to go from zero to a hundred with, with flow. So when we, when we saw that, we knew, or we know that this direct connection of storm to the sanitary, it's, it's got to be close if it's happening that fast. The unidrograph just boom, within just minutes, went from really normal, easy flows, no problem, to, to, you know, raging whitewater, well, maybe not whitewater, raft experience. So that will be a, a significant upgrade, and we're really excited to, to be able to do that on John Street as part of the, the paving effort. The hardest part about John Street is maintenance protection of traffic. It's a real narrow street, one-way street, highly trafficked, you know, state route. We're going to have to close that road to do pretty much every time we're working in that road, because it's just, just so narrow. But we're, we'll do the best we can, we've developed maintenance protection traffic plans, Billy will talk about that a little bit. And then as far as the touring funds, once the storm line is installed, we get everything separated, you know, they're going to mill and, mill and pave the, the entire extents, replace some of the curbing where necessary, and then new sidewalks on John Street. So new sidewalks on John Street as part of the paving, limited sidewalks on Genesee Street as part of the paving there. Both, both will be kind of completed at the same time under one, one bid package. I'll turn it over to Billy.
Okay, so basically, the paving will start down at the Genesee Street Bridge. There'll be a small section just got an overlay, and then when we get into the pinkish-orange color there, that's mill and fill, it'll be two layers, it'll be deeper. We'll go up by East Genesee Street all the way up to Fulton, stopping short just to Fulton Street, and then we'll also be doing John Street. And like Seth says, as part of this contract, basically, it's curb to curb, and on John Street, we're, we're trying to get all the utility work done ahead of time, and then on John Street, we will be doing entire sidewalks, like on both sides, and we'll replace any curbing that needs to be done. There is a little parking lot there, we might adjust the parking lot entrances based on dealing with the owner there, but that's basically the mill and fill. You go to the next slide there, Seth. Now, basically, the storm sewer, we start off at Genesee Street on the top photo, and we're just going over to a catch basin, then we go across the street over to the west side of the street, and then we go along the west side, down about three-fifths of the way, and then come over with a catch basin. And then we pick that storm sewer line that is separating that big parking area that's between Fulton Street and John Street, that Seth was talking about before. So then that way, all that stormwater will now be going into the storm sewer system directly down to the Wasco River down near the bridge. We'll also be replacing one manit, sanitary manhole a little bit farther over to the right, and that'll allow us to basically have a separate sanitary sewer and pick up a, a line coming over from one of the buildings, and then also, so that will be, then John Street will be completely separated. So now we can go to the next slide there, Seth. And then the next one is our detorp thing. That, you know, when you deal with, John Street is a state highway, it's owned by the New York State D O T, so you have to get a state permit. One of the biggest things they're always concerned is work zone traffic control plans. So you gotta, you, actually, I think you spend more time doing the work zone traffic control plan than you do designing the project, but that's part of the game. Basically, because we're going to be closing down John Street occasionally, if you're coming from the west going east, you'll just get to North Street, go down to Genesee Street, and then over, and then you'd be on your way out. Instead of just where you normally would go farther up the arterial and turn onto John Street, you're just going to go quicker, you're going to use North Street from the arterial to Genesee, and then go up Genesee. If you're coming in the other way from, say, Grand Ave, and you're no longer allowed to go down John Street, well, then you're going to go all the way down to North, over to Genesee, and then come back again if that's where you're going. So I mean, it's kind of simplistic, but it's a lot of signs every time we're going to be closing that road down. We have all the, the plans for the work zone traffic controller, are, as you can see, they're, they're already been drawn. Seth was able to use a C D M Smith to assist us on that, which was very helpful. We still have to get a, a, a permit from the New York State D O T. We'll get the permit because if the city's involved in it, basically, it's no charge. So we'll, we'll be the permittee. But we actually have two different contracts in a way. We've got to get all the utility work done ahead of time on John Street, and then we'll come back with a, a, a bid contract for the mill and fill, so that could be a separate contractor. So we're contemplating whether or not we want to just get the job bid out and then just go for one permit, which would cover both operations, because while the, when we bid it, and by the time we come back to council, they get their insurances and bonds, that could be three, four weeks that will give us the opportunity to use that permit and get the utility work done on John Street. to use that permit and get the utility work done on John Street first and still only have the one permit with the DOT. I don't know if you got any, do we have any other slides?
Yeah, Bill, just one, one more point to the maintenance protection of traffic. This, this is really kind of the high level focus on John Street and the, the closure route and what that would look like. I think it's important to also note that the work on East Genesee Street really for, for the most part is being planned to be done on one half or the other half at the, at a time. So, you know, we're, we're not anticipating any significant closures of, of East Genesee Street. They'll just be reduced to one, one lane around the work zone while they work on either the north or south side, east or westbound.
And the coordination with the public, a lot of that's been done with Seth's department because they're doing the utility work and they had to get into all those buildings and find out where all those rustware connected, found out several were connected. So he's set up an email, a text string, so he's been notifying every, all the people of his progress throughout. Once we get into the actual bidding, basically of the mill and fill, when that comes into the second half of the project, we have a city's website. We put things on the website every week on all our capital projects, so we'll keep everybody periodically updated on that. And then basically as an update, basically because we are using touring money, we just did a slide here, out of the million and a half, if you look at the last two items, East Genesee, I mean, East Genesee Street Hill and John Street, that's 922,000, that's almost two-thirds of the work. All the other ones, Lansing Street paving prime, we did that as a change order to last year's road program, they're completed. South Street, if you've noticed, all the poles are here, about half of the heads are here. So we've now replaced the poles on the west side of South Street and we're down there probably between, just south of Richardson Ave on the west side. We just got another, I think nine heads in, so that'll take us, we'll do that after Memorial Day. We don't, really don't want to get into taking down a pole now because we have to drill out the anchors, it takes a day for the thing to set and then have a dark spot, you know, for the holiday weekend. So we'll, we'll finish up the west side probably the week after, next week after the holiday and then start coming back up the east side of the street. We still got another shipment of heads that gotta come in before we can finish up the project. But all the poles are here and it's just a matter of getting that last shipment and we'll finish that up. Once the poles were down, we're gonna try to repaint the existing poles and then we can use those for spares for both the East Genesee and West Genesee Street projects. So we're planning on repainting them and then also changing them over to LEDs. The guard rail, we gave us $50,000 last year, we've spent that all. And this year, one of the proposed things that the city manager will be talking to you in the future, I think I was asking for about $30,000 more this year to try to complete all the guard rails that are necessary in the city of Auburn. We've got most of them, like I said, the majority of them, we did last year, trying to make sure, unsafe, unsafe. Signalized intersection upgrades, we had six upgrades. Had a, you know, one of the person we were dealing with left the firm, kind of got, didn't pass the ball too well, he called me today, so now we're, we'll be putting in a requisition to buy the parts to do that project. That'll, I'll get that done in the next couple of days. Tech Park lighting, we did the lighting between Mac Studio and Tessie, but now we're gonna be going up the rest of Technology Boulevard to North Division Street and Commerce Way. So we'll be using some of this money and I've asked for, we had some money left over when we were doing improvements. Jenny was doing signs with Mac Studios and, and to, for the technology park and we were doing some street lighting. So I have a little money there, some money here and I'm asking for a little bit more in the, the new allocation to we complete that project. And then East Hill and John Street, we just spoke about. So I mean, unfortunately, like I say, almost two-thirds of the money's wrapped up in this East Genesee, John Street project. As a tentative, a request for the, this year's touring money, I put down an item in there in case the bids came in higher, we may need to have a little bit more money. You just don't know in this bidding climate. So far we've been very fortunate, we've been getting good bid on these projects that we normally get bids, but the prices have been good so far. But we've only had, on the road program and the last two sidewalk program, had a single bidder. But it's, it's fortunate for us that they didn't know they were gonna be the single bidder and they sharpened the pencils up and gave us a good price. I just don't know what this new contract will be. We may be, hopefully if the, if bids are normal, even though prices are up, we might have enough money with that 922,000 to do these. We may be unpleasantly surprised and find out that we have larger bids and then if that's the way, we might need to have a little more of this year's touring money to finish up the project. Just won't know until the bids come in. Any questions?
Do you know if the guard rail on Bellevue was addressed in the first round? Cause I know I've received calls in the past about that.
If, if not, we'll look at it and make sure it's in the next list. But there was a couple dead-end streets that we didn't do because they weren't a safety hazard, but the other ones that were, cars have been known to hit them or along some of them were having a busy street, we did those first. The ones along the bridges, near the bridges, we did those. But we know there's still about $30,000 left of guard rail and a lot of those will be at the dead ends.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I can check with Mike Telbent from Public Works. I actually talked to him today about another section of guard rail and he indicated they have three sections of guard rail that they had planned out doing, that they could get to and they were going to get out. So that may be one of the...
Thank you.
On the council before we move on, I'll take a break before we get into Mr. Diker, are you good to go or?
I'm good.
Help me out?
I'm good.
We're almost there. We're almost there. Mr. Diker told me he had brought to our presentation.
I think we had a misunderstanding there.
Never, never.
Mayor, councilors, over the last couple of weeks, exchanged a couple of lists with you based on some thoughts that Seth had related to this year's allocation of touring funds. I didn't hear much back from, from anybody, so I guess this is an opportunity to communicate with, with me so that we can work on, hit some priority projects. I, we'll tell you, there, there's an interesting project that we haven't had a chance to really talk about much that actually, Bill, do you mind coming back up again? And that is the video traffic controllers. I think we mentioned it briefly a while back that we had one of these video traffic controllers on loan, kind of as a trial at the corner of Loop Road here and Genesee Street by Vigo's. You may have noticed it's not functioning like it did currently and that's because it was during a trial period, but Bill, do you mind?
That's right. Yeah, it, it, what do you call it? I was just, that was the firm that I was dealing with, Northeast Signals. We were dealing with Steve Atkins, Steve left them and we're, we were trying to find out who was taking his place, so we lost a couple of months in there. But the, the guy, Joe called me today from Northeast Signal, he just sent me an estimate for to fix the six controllers. While I was on the phone, we were talking about the MyoVision, we're also talking about the fire chief also in one of his requests on the second page and he's talking about doing preemption. Preemption is, you know, where an emergency vehicle can get control of the signal so they can get through safely. He's having a problem at the new firehouse, trying to get out, especially on Seminary Ave, getting, to get through two arterial signals and the one at Seminary at Genesee Street. He's probably got another few intersections he'd like to get preemption. MyoVision, the one that has this video detection, it eliminates the loops. It is cheaper now for us to do a better job on the traffic control by doing this MyoVision. The New York State Department of Transportation in Region Three is doing a lot of this work over in Anadaga County and we're part of Region Three. So I'm gonna reach out to them to see if we can, in the city of Auburn, there's 50 signalized intersections, 25 are owned by the state, 25 are owned by the city. So I mean, a lot of the, the traffic or the signals closest to downtown are most of them like on John Street, the, all the arterial ones, Grand Ave and some of the ones on North Street, they're all state-owned roads, so they're under their control. But this MyoVision, this video detection, it's cheaper to put one of those up and you have a lot more control than putting the loops in there, which we grind up every time we mill and pave the road. And by the time we reinstall those loops, we spent more money than we bought one of these units. MyoVision also has a, an upgrade where the same, when they put the division up, their, their little controller box also has preemption capable for about, I think about 4,000 extra per unit. So it would be, the only thing extra if we went to preemption is I asked the fire chief before, how many vehicles would we need to have like transmitters to? He said about 15 vehicles. So I've asked Northeast Signal, give us a quotation on what it costs to put those 15 vehicles equipped with their transmitters. The, the video detection, the MyoVision units at the traffic would be like the receivers and then they would have full control of the intersection, you know, when they're coming through for preemption. So yes, we're looking at that, that was one of the requests for council to consider. Do we want to put some video detection? I think I wrote down, I think it was 18K per intersection, about 18,000. If we, the, there is a special state contract for 12,999 right now for just the MyoVision, which is normally usually around 16 or 18 for regular customers, but the state has a special price. But we're looking to see if there, if the state also is allowed to put the preemption unit on the state contractor, that'll have to be separate, but I think that'll jump the price up to, you know, 17, 18,000. So I mean, that's a fantastic price. So you know, I'm, I'm hope, what do you call it? It's in the best interest when we do the road program, anytime we do a street near an intersection, to change over to the video. And, and like the manager said, we didn't realize that the, the unit they had was just a loner and it was, it was supposed to be used to, only for a short time basis and then be used to other places. So basically we have to buy a unit now to get that back in operation, but that's, you know, it's well worth the cost for that intersection. So that was another one of those items to be considered. I mean, if we were to do all of the 25 signals in the city, it would be, you know, 25 times the 18,000, what's that about, you know, for?
Every lane?
Yeah, 450,000, yeah. But, but we could just do, you know, the, the ones that are most necessary at first and then as we slowly do the road program, incorporate those in every one. And like I say, it is cheaper for us to put a video unit in than to put in the loops because to grind up the loops and put them back is 20 to 25,000 per intersection. And if we can put, have full control of modern technology and all the rest for 18,000, we'd be foolish not to spend it that way.
And Bill, just to clarify, I believe you've mentioned that there is some video recall availability. I know so if there was a traffic accident or a crime potential...
Oh, yes.
...timeframe, we could utilize that video to...
Right, right. Yeah, they're all hooked up to the internet, you're right.
So that's a benefit. I know the mayor and I, I think when we go on, I have a keynote show occasionally, one of his standard questions is when are we gonna get the traffic lights timed right? Because that's something he dealt with for years and years. It's always a, it's always a question.
He's asked me that for 14 years and I always snowball.
Did you ask him why he didn't do it?
Because he knows that it's one of those things and this technology helps us to...
Right.
...make things better and I think it's maybe a little more relevant right now with the cost of fuel. I believe the red on red happened as a, as a response to high fuel costs many, many moons ago, right? So this is one other thing that would kind of help keep traffic moving at a more efficient pace.
Yeah, and it, and the preemption is, I think is an excellent idea. It's, it's something I've, all our controllers, then what we've been putting up throughout the years, we made sure they were preemption capable. So if we ever wanted to upgrade that, we could just use those and they're compatible with our existing units. So they just, a super box gets set right in there. And like I say, I was really pleasantly surprised when I found out that MyoVision has an upgrade to their existing feature where they have the preemption right in with their normal. So you, you get both things for a small, nominal upgrade. Any other questions?
Just, I, I'm for it and, and to a, to a degree, like how safe are the security, you know, encrypting the signals from say the, the fire police? Cause again, like hacking can happen. I just, I just, again, this, this is a...
But this is, you know, the New York State Department of Transportation's involved in it. They are adopting this system, you know? I think every software probably can be hacked now, but everybody's aware of the hacking, so everybody is constantly upgrading their software to give them the best security. And I don't think the state is gonna, they've picked this system because of its security and I'm sure that they will be watching over it to make sure that, you know, it stays as current as it can possibly be.
Yeah, I support it. I, I think I like the idea of like phasing it in with the, the intersections that make the most sense and coordinating with the state to allow us to, you know, get access or have us use that, utilize it for police and fire to, to have a way to, you know, have control over the lighting. So I, I'm for that.
Do we know what the ongoing maintenance costs are in terms of updating the software?
Actually, the software, you know, I was expecting that it was gonna be a big ticket item. I don't know if it's just the initial period or whatever, but they just provide the software free of charge. I mean, they've already installed it in our computers and we can watch not only...
You sound so innocent, Mr. Diker. It's like, I don't know, it's free.
You know, but I mean, I mean, we can look at the software, other, the functioning units that are into the system. You know, we uploaded it on a couple of ours. Not only could see, we could see the operation of our Loop Road and, and Genesee Street, but we also could see, they gave us access to some of the other cities as a, you know, view only and could see their actual operation of the intersection video-wise and seeing how it was performing. And they, and they keep track of all the movements 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They keep an historical record and like the city manager says, they have a video, you know, record in case there was an accident, they can recall it. It's, it's, it's an amazing tool. I mean, it's really, and, and the state is adopting it, you know? They're increasing their units almost every day. So I mean, this is, and anytime we can be in the same system as the New York State DOT, you know, we're, that's, we're in good hands because then they can always back us up. If we have any questions, then they, they're doing it all the time.
Mr. Loopy just verified that Big Brother is watching.
He is, he is. He's gonna be watching us more too. Yes, counselor.
I'm leery that the state's involved with DOT.
I know.
And number two, have you checked with any of their cities that are up and running with this? Are they working it? Is it working? Is it not working?
It's, what do you call it? When we looked at their presentation, they gave us a, a few of the communities and we contacted... contacted about two of them, and they were very pleased, even though, you know, they're just had maybe a year's worth of operation. Another one was online, said that, you know, they're really amazed how efficient it became so quickly. They were very pleased with it. You know, and like I say, if the state has adopted it, and they're slow to adopt anything, if they've vetted it out and they're happy with it, and they're increasing the usage, you know, that's, you know...
If you have a couple of studies that already have it up and running, just let me know what they are.
Okay, we'll get that information to you.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, looking for more input on touring road...
If you've got any questions or comments on the information we sent you, and again, you know, we can look at any of these things, and based on your info, we'll go back and we'll put a plan together for these funds, again, based on some priorities and then based on, as Bill said, you know, we may have to potentially dip into these funds to complete the Genesee Street project. So, you know, we'll have to have a standby list essentially.
Would it make sense with this new round of touring road money to look at maybe doing the sidewalks and the streetscape on East Genesee Street as part of an ongoing project rather than, you know, fixing ones that are disrepair? You know, the greenery up there, the trees up there are in rough shape. Maybe now is the time, since we're already up there working, to do the complete job and use this next round of touring money to do that. I don't know what that price tag is, but I would be interested in exploring that.
Jenny likes...
What's that?
Jenny likes...
I love what you're saying.
I mean, that's, we talked about the entryways of the city, that's one of the entryways of the city. We just did South Street, it's amazing. We're already up there working. I think now is the time, at least throw some price tag of what we're looking at. You know, I know that sidewalks are typically the property owner's responsibility, but I don't know, there's three or four courses of sidewalk in front of every business on East Hill. I mean, you're going to put a small business out of business if you're expecting them to replace those sidewalks. So, I don't know, if there's something we can do in this next round, I'd be interested in looking at that.
Counselor, I agree with you. It's like remodeling an old house. You've 99% of the house, and you have one room. 20 years later, it's still the one room that isn't done, but if we do this at one time, we have a clean slate, and it makes it easier for walking and for snow removal for many, many, many reasons.
And I'm also in favor of finishing the guardrails, I think. You know, since we've started, let's finish it.
You want to say, counselor?
Go ahead.
I'm interested, earlier, Mr. Aikman mentioned how beautiful the city looks and, you know, with the trees in bloom and the signage, the 200-year bicentennial Harry Tubman. I think there's an opportunity to help Seward Park, maybe consider sidewalks and the landscaping there, and having a, you know, along with the signage that is happening. I know that Auburn Beautiful Beautification Commission does, has been having volunteers touch up signs. I think it'd be valuable if we were able to fund that so that all the signs, the historical markers are, you know, look presentable and consistent, you know. I'm in favor of using touring money for more of the aesthetic historical areas, and particularly the historical markers, and having money for that on a continuing basis. You know, something, it's not, it's not big-ticket items like what we've been talking about, but at least having, you know, 10, $15,000 towards the materials to keep those signs looking really sharp.
Is there any, I can't, I don't have the list in front of me, I forgot it. It was Fulton Street, the south and north Fulton, from arterial to Walnut Street. Has there been any discussion of addressing that street?
Yes, that's on our list to consider, to prioritize at some point, yes.
So, there's a lot on this list. There's a lot here. So, I made some notes after I went over it, and I just noted that, to me, projects that really address our safety and security and the safety and security of all our citizens and visitors are important. Projects that give us money back, like I saw the LED replacement, I assume that saves us money in the long run to switch out the lights. Projects that we have to do, and by have to do, I mean, we're already committed to it, and I think you touched on that, just finishing projects that we've started is important. And anything that's mandated, I know there's a lot, these are just general comments, and they probably, everything you have on this list falls into one of those categories, but I was curious about a couple, a couple things. So, the Pomeroy Foundation provides the funding for roadside markers, but I assume they don't help us maintain them. You can't get a grant to update existing historical markers. Does anybody know that?
That's correct. They don't, they'll fund you a new marker, there's an application process, but they don't provide...
They don't give you money to paint it?
No, they give you pointers on how to do it, but they don't provide maintenance.
Okay, and the other thing I just made a note of was, I just thought if emergency vehicles are having a problem getting out of, getting out to the site that they're headed for, that's a priority. I mean, it just makes sense to me to coordinate them leaving the firehouse and getting to the fire accident. Yeah, those are just the comments I had, how I thought about this.
We are reasonably on a ten-time mark, we have...
I know.
Is there anything on that list that feels... Shouldn't be, I'm in the list. No. They're all needs, so that's all good. All right, we'll work on that, we'll work with staff to try to get some... Again, a lot of this was just some general ideas on ballpark prices. Obviously, with the climate we're in right now, getting specific prices would be important. I know where we're really standing in some projects.
Yeah, I support, you know, what was mentioned earlier between you and Mr. Luppi and what Counselor Tino mentioned, what Counselor Kent mentioned. I know that we talked about streetlights on Genesee already, that's something that Councilor Castro had mentioned in the past, so, and my support of money going towards a line going for continued maintenance of the historical markers at Seward Park. So that would be at least a priority. I agree with everything that's been said, the video surveillance society initiative protocol enacted, so.
We're going to stop the hammers all throughout. And we have the rule lamp, you know, we have offices down there, we have wall-to-wall TVs, and we'll just take turn of action, bring it down north, south, east, and west of the city. And then the TV goes out with one, and then we have time before we let the camera on. Thank you.
Progress? I really don't have anything specific on the progress unless anybody gives questions or concerns. Again, we're running down towards the end of our fiscal year, and we've kind of put the brakes on just general spending, we're finishing up projects and doing what's necessary. Things seem to be going really well. Other, Counselors? Counselor Cuddy, please.
Yes, I wanted to say that I agree with Dr. Aikman, and if it's okay with the council, if I could reach out to Dr. Aikman to go over his concept of common sense gun reform. I think his approach is, you know, reaching out to our federal representatives for, I think would be important now. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to reach out to Dr. Aikman and see what we can write up and bring it back to you to see if you'd be interested to move forward with that resolution.
I see a lot of head nodding, I know.
Great, thank you.
Hundred percent.
Counselor, do you have one?
Thank you, Mayor. A letter was sent today to the city, actually to Kathleen Cuddy, Director of Public Health at the county, but it was also forwarded to staff here at the city from the department, State Department of Health regarding our proposed rules and regulations for the Owasco Lake watershed. I know not everybody's probably had a chance to read it. I did read through it, and there's a paragraph that concerns me, and I just, I just want to go on record early and voice my concerns. It says, "DOH and our state agency partners look forward to discussing the findings and collaborating to ensure the proposed regulations are aligned with our water quality priorities for the state and region. To advance this, the state inter-agency workgroup members would like to report on the progress to date and discuss establishing a joint workgroup that includes members of the watershed rules and regulations, project steering committee, the local health department, as well as the Owasco Lake Watershed Management Council." I don't think anybody clearly understands what that means. I'm hoping that the local department of health, maybe the watershed management council, will be looking for clarification on that, because I don't quite understand that process. We've already done this. We did this for two years, we sent it to the state. They need to communicate to us and the town of Owasco what their proposed changes are, because we are the ones that are in charge of the watershed. We are the ones that voted on these and sent them to the state, we are the purveyors of water. This is on us, not those other agencies. We've already had all the discussions. So I would like a clarification of what this process is going to be and why the city of Auburn and the town of Owasco specifically are not being proposed to be included in that process. I'm also...
Yeah, just to, you know, follow up on what Counselor Jean Tino said, I mean, I'm just going to go a little bit further. I found the letter confusing because, as Counselor Jean Tino said, we had already been through this. It's almost as like either it was an amnesia, or it was, or just directly insulting. Yeah, it was really confounding that we got that letter, like, all this work hadn't been done, and that, you know, if only, you know, we, there needs to be more study. The studies, we've been asking for them to move. We've been giving them the proper avenues by which to solve this problem, and it's almost like we're starting at ground one again, square one.
Well, basically, it took two years for them to write a letter to us, and we're going to start a process all over. That's what they're saying.
Yeah, it's exactly, it's insulting, so. Yes, if we can get clarification sooner, because I just think it's really, at least I'm insulted, that we need, we need clear answers. We've done the work, and I'm sure we can provide them with the science. I know Dr. Efler knows that their, the studies exist, and I can help provide, we can help provide them with the information they need to pass the rules as they are, so.
Can I just weigh in? So I haven't had an opportunity to read, well, I'm reading it right now, I have it up on my screen, but I haven't had an opportunity to sit down and read it since work. But I do have, I have an appointment to meet with Dr. Efler tomorrow morning anyway, so we'll go over this, and I'll bring your concerns and thoughts to that meeting and let you know.
Great.
Anything else, Counselor? Mr. Decker, they had a visitor in my office today with some concern, and I, personally, I wasn't capable of communicating and trying to figure out the best course of action. I asked Corporation Counsel, and he did, and he got the, really, he got right to the root of the problem, did a great job, and we end up bringing the visitor down to Rachel. And the lady has all the issues resolved. She was very grateful she made a point, and was saying, "Thank you for taking the time." And I don't want credit for it, but Mr. Garland, Rachel, both they put her in the right direction. She was very emotional, very upset, but I feel came to a good conclusion, and she was satisfied, so I do want to thank the staff for their job, because they do everything.
Counselor, no other business from Counselor? We have a request for executive session. No, I don't, Mayor. I'd like to ask to circle back to other council business, if you don't mind, and Counselor Cuddy's comments on common sense gun control. Maybe this is out of line, I hope you don't take it that way. Could we please include the police chief in that discussion?
Yes.
And possibly Assistant Corporation Counsel Garland, who has knowledge of the legal aspects of all that and experience dealing with those things, so that if we do a resolution, it actually makes sense for our folks that are going to have to enforce it as well?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah. My intent was to have a very rough draft that would go through the proper departments and whatnot, so. I just wanted to reach out to Dr. Aikman to, you know, see where his starting point is, and then work from there. But yeah, that sounds good.
Before we...
Still, there are other visits from Counsel. Counselor, the parade is Monday morning, 11:00 AM. You are in charge of breakfast, and you're a council member on the doors, so we have quite a crowd, so lineup is at 11:00...
Apples.
I'm sorry, apples?
Apples.
As long as they're not throwing them at us, I'm...
Tomatoes.
Tomatoes. So lineup is at 11:00 AM, and as always, we will walk to the Veterans Park, where we will leave and review the remainder of the parade. And earlier in the morning, I think, I believe it's at 9:00 AM, there's a mass at St. Joseph's Cemetery, it's open to the public, everyone's encouraged to attend if you so desire, you're always welcome.
Anything else, Counselor? Public to be heard. Is there anyone desiring to be heard? Yes, sir, please.
Hello, my name is Adam Evans, Ten Rose Lawn Lane. I am so excited to hear that you guys are working on something to address the traffic lights in Auburn, because as my fiance can tell you, that's one of my biggest qualms with traffic in Auburn. That being said, I did want to echo the concerns of Councilman Cuddy. I think that with that type of infrastructure, that could be a target from nation-state actors, cybercriminals, stuff like that. So I'd be curious to see what kind of redundancy that system would have if it were to fail or if it were to be hacked. I'm assuming that it would just go to a blinking red light or a standard traffic pattern. But I would also think that if you guys haven't done so already, that maybe the city IT department should do their due diligence and evaluate the patch cycle. So how often is this company releasing patches for the software? Is it every month? Is it every six months? Is it every year? Because I think that should be an important piece for something as critical as that type of infrastructure. Additionally, there's been some discussion about gun control this evening. I did want to just mention that although I think gun control is only a Band-Aid to a much larger issue, and I could share experiences with you why gun control ultimately will not work, I don't think there's any reason for any... not work, I don't think there's any reason for an 18-year-old to own an AR and I own an AR myself, you know, but when I was 18, I certainly didn't know my, my knee from my, you know, ear, so I, I support that and everything, just short of implementing a process that would require somebody to prove that they have a reason to own that type of weapon, such as the pistol permit process, I, I think that that might be, I think that might be a bit too extensive, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to be heard? Mr. Trowell, welcome back. Welcome back.
David Trowell, we have to deal with the issues of the landlords of putting social service people in buildings. The reason why I'm here is just before I came here, your code enforcers were on 9 East Genesee Street. They were there today, they condemned a part of a building and unfortunately, their hands are tied. They cannot get the people out of there. So, as I was working today, all of a sudden, I hear a loud crash as I was pulling a car out and I look and the girl is throwing stuff out the window. Cracked pipes, needles, syringes, straps, sunglasses. So, I called 911, we just, police came. I have pictures and all and unfortunately, as I talked to the police officers, they opened up the door to that 9 East Genesee Street and unfortunately, right in the doorway, someone took a crap, a human one. I told the cops, put the gloves on, they went upstairs, second floor. It says condemned, somebody's living in, in there, but they say at 7:00, these people can leave then, but during the day, they can stay in there. Why is that? I'd like an answer for that one, but the other thing is, is when you have these landlords that put these people in there or you have landlords that buy houses that are like the one down the road from me, falling apart where handicap people can't even get by because the stairs are falling in or the roof is falling in, it has one mark on it, not two, and it's been like this for, I don't know, five years would be a good answer, but the issue is, is we have to do something about these landlords. You have to give these code enforcers more power to get these people out or to make these landlords fix up these properties. And if not, you are going to lose an awful lot of business down on East Genesee Street because I do know of three people that are leaving right now and I only have a few more years and I'm gonna get out because if I didn't have a well-established business, I would not be down there either. Every week, I kick at least one needle down in that metal grate on the corner of East Genesee Street Seminary Ave. When your city workers were doing sewer checkovers, they did not realize that I was telling the truth when they looked down there and saw it 20 to 30.
I have, I have to cut you off, sir.
I understand.
Thank you.
But, please, give these code enforcers more power to stop.
Thank you.
Karen Walter, 15 Case Avenue, for the previous speaker, that gives a whole new visual for squatters, that's, but my purpose for addressing counsel this evening is, it's nice that we're having a code review. I know that planning and codes work very hard in order to try to maintain a good standard within Auburn and by virtue of them looking at the ordinances, I see that is an evolving process and not a stagnation. So, that's a very positive thing. I think sometimes people that are new to Auburn, for instance, they may have five dogs. They don't realize that there's an ordinance that the maximum is three dogs and of course, it doesn't become a problem until it's a problem, just like the previous speaker. It's not a problem until it becomes an apparent problem. And with city hall staff and council and the mayor and city manager and corporation council, hopefully, some of these problems can get properly addressed. A thought I had is that I don't really see that, I, I, with the businesses, what Steve mentioned about, you know, maybe that's like a little overkill, I see there is some, some gatekeeping and, and I'm not really certain on the specifics, of the specifics of those. After COVID, I was not, I have not religiously been attending your meetings, but now that COVID is kind of in a good place, maybe I'll resume. And the other thing is that as you review those definitions and so forth, words matter. So, when you say that a kennel is for boarding and sale and commercial use, and yes, it is in the industrial zone, which is why SPCA is on York Street, it is industrial, to be cognizant that in a residential area, we want a certain standard of living, otherwise, if we wanted to have barnyard animals or multiples, we may live in outside the city. It's not too far out to be in Aurelius. And one last thought I had, and that was on the 70 South Street scenario, I don't know whether, and, and again, I'm just tossing it out there, usually goes planning board and then if they get the approval, it goes to historic review, but if the historic review is the more higher bar to meet, is it possible that the application goes there first because then if they've met that bar, then it might be easier to go the other way, rather than in that particular situation, planning board approved it and then historic review was like, well, why didn't we know anything about this? So, just, just a thought, but keep up the good work and I appreciate it. Three, done.
I'm talking now, so I won't go.
Go for it. Okay, go for it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to be heard? Very well. Mr. Decker, you pressed an executive session. Is there anybody? I'm taking a motion to adjourn. Counselor Cuddy?
Yep.
Counselor McCastro?
Motion to adjourn, 7:30, 8:00 PM. Counselor Ken?
Yes.
Counselor Genitino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor McCastro?
Yes.
Mayor? Aye.
Absolutely. You got time to get there and get a hot dog.